March, or May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, pledge of allegiance? Verification of agenda posting?
I'm gonna do the roll call. Vice Chair Renee Wells?
Here.
Commissioner Eric Martin? Commissioner John Hughes?
Here.
And I'm Adam Boganegra, Executive Secretary.
Now verification of agenda posting.
The agenda for Airport Advisory Commission of the City of Hollister meeting of April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at ten a.m., per Government Code Section five four nine five four dash two.
Uh, consent agenda? Uh, do we have a, uh, motion to approve the minutes of the Airport Advisory Commission meeting of March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three? Um, I have some, uh, corrections to item seven, uh, B as in boy. It, the second sentence, or the third sentence states, she stated that when Renee comes back, we can open for bid, and I'm not sure what that means. I think it's just a... Unless they're talking about a different Renee.
I believe it is a different Renee.
Oh, it is?
I believe it is a different Renee.
Okay.
Yeah, the CIP manager is also named Renee.
Okay. Um, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes as is?
A motion to approve the minute.
Second.
Approved three zero? Uh, item number six, reports. Airport manager.
So for that I have, um, we have a third-party recruiter to assist in the, uh, obviously we're figuring out it's a hard, it's a hard-to-fill position, so, uh, we can expect to receive updates in the recruitment, about the recruitment in July.
Is there any, a change to the job description?
Not that I'm aware of.
Uh, was it just that we didn't have enough applicants for the last round?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Uh, item B as in boy, removal of the old buildings.
There's no new information for that one.
Moving on to item seven, commission action, uh, bylaws commissioners will review and discuss. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at them? At this time, are we allowed to make, um, recommendations for, uh, changes to the bylaws?
Yes, you can make recommendations and then, um, staff will implement those and bring them back for final approval at a, a future meeting.
And then they would go on to the City Council for approval?
Um, I, you know, I'm not sure, and let me look if, if it addresses that. I'm not, I know in the prior, uh, version of the bylaws, it did say they would go to the commission, so... Yeah, I can, I can look at the procedure, um, beyond your, your approval and let you know.
Do any other commissioners have some, um, changes they would like to see made to the bylaws? I have a few. Uh, should I go first? Um, I feel like we have three commissioners right now. Um, we need five. Uh, we would like five. Originally, we had seven. Um, I would like to go back, we have several, we have numerous people, um, residents who are interested in San Benito County that, uh, can't apply because they live just right outside, um, the city limits. But they're, uh, very aviation-related, they have a lot of experience. One happens to have been on the commission for a long time, uh, and now is not allowed to be back on it because he lives in the county. Uh, I know two other people who are very interested, who are very involved with the airport and would like to be on the commission. So I would like to see section two, um, changed to read, "The Advisory Commission shall be composed of five members, strike all of, and change it to the majority of whom shall be residents of the City of Hollister, period." Uh, I would like to see stricken, "Accepting any current commissioners residing in San Benito County as of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, who shall be allowed to complete their initial terms of the Hollister Airport Commission." That no longer applies. Um, the rest of that section, uh, "Each member of the City Council and Mayor shall nominate one member of the Airport Advisory Commission, subject to the approval of the City Council." Then under section two point five, I would like to, it to read, uh, "The majority of the five members appointed by individual council members, um, should be residents of the City of Hollister, with no more than two members being residents of the County of San Benito, who can represent the Hollister Municipal Airport." Also, on, uh, under section one point five, uh, Article Two, officers, um, there is a typo. It reads that, uh, the quorum is four, and it should say three. And I had, uh, only, uh, changed the last paragraph on the final page, section one amendment, or procedure. Uh, just the, to ba- add back in at the very end, "Upon successful vote, the proposed amendment shall be presented to the City Council for ratification at the next regularly scheduled council meeting." I don't know if that is necessary, if it's not necessary and it doesn't have to go to City Council and it's just our recommendation and our approval, then, uh, that would not need to be added back in.
Which section is that?
It, it's on the last page.
Article four.
The last, the only, under procedure. It was in the prior, um, amended bylaws, or the bylaws that were amended March twenty-fourth. I'm just using, putting back in the language that was there, but it was stricken for some reason. Do I need to make a motion to do that?
No, we would just need general consensus that a majority of the, um, commissioners present also are interested in seeing those changes. So if either Commissioner Hughes or Commissioner Martin can just indicate that they also are in support of those changes.
I think, uh, the reason I'm doing this is because it seems like we don't always have a quorum and we haven't had a meeting in a while, and, uh, it's great that we have three today and we have a quorum, but if we only have five members and we can only get three that live within the city, uh, I've tried various times to, uh, numerous times to get, uh, people interested in applying, but a lot of them live right outside the county in Ridgemark or somewhere else, just right outside the city limits. So it's been difficult, um, to get any applications.
I also have a suggested amendment, um, if it is the, um, pleasure of the commission. The commission currently follows Roberts' Rules of Order, whereas the City Council Planning Commission and the other commissions in the city follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Um, and the difference really is that Rosenberg's are simpler and shorter and a lot easier to follow. So for that reason, I would suggest that you consider changing that. It's section seven of Article Three.
Is there a copy or some sort of, uh, uh, of you that, uh, from?
Yeah, I can email those to you, I can get a copy or get your email address from the city clerk and email them to you. They're also available online, but I can either email them to you. They're Rosenberg's Rules of Order, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or just general?
Again, just general consensus if...
Sorry, that was section, let me cut you off, section seven or section six?
It's, uh, Article Three, Section Six.
Okay.
And so it, um, staff can make the suggested changes, um, but that doesn't preclude you from making changes at, at the next meeting when the new bylaws are actually adopted. So as long as we agendize it that you will be adopting them or, um, discussing it, amending and adopting, you can still make further changes at, at the next meeting if you need some more time to think.
Well, through the, I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with, um, Rosenberg, you said? Rules of Order, I'm familiar with Roberts' Rules of Order, so I have no opinion on it whatsoever. Cause I, I'm, I'm not familiar.
I have experience with Roberts' Rules of Order too, out of Fisher Lake, and I am very interested in connecting to Rosenberg's rules.
Yeah, and it's just a suggestion, it's not required to change it, just...
Also, maybe when we have a chance to review those, uh, in advance of our next meeting, we can, we can put it in there, but decide whether to amend it back or revert it back to Roberts' Rules of Order.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that. Is there any, uh, is there agreement, uh, with the other two commissioners with the changes that I suggested?
I don't have a problem with them.
Are you okay?
I'm in agreement, yeah.
Okay, great. So we'll, the changes will be made for the next meeting and then we can, uh, get them in advance to review and approve.
Sure have a question, and so the amendments that we're discussing tonight will be put into the new bylaws and then be ratified in our next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
And then we can also make changes, so if you go home and you think about it and you find something else you read through or want to make changes, we can do that at the next meeting.
Cool, would you mind if I had a copy of the, what you have for the changes, so like, and at least study them?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, item seven, B, elect a chairperson and vice-chairperson?
I moved to leave Renee the chairperson and the new guy, the vice.
The new guy. Um, I guess I can second, I don't...
Can they second it? I mean...
I think there's no other, they have no other option.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Well, thank you, I accept. Um, item eight, uh, is there any public, are there any public input?
Just what I was asking last month, that's right. Just what we've been asking.
Uh, do you have Mark Sterrett?
Uh, good evening, my name is Mark Sterrett. Uh, just a quick comment on the, um, number of commissioners, and if they're city or county. Eric, Renee, myself, and Jay, who's no longer here, we had voted at the time, cause we're having, just like you are today, we're having trouble getting a quorum, so we went from our seven to five, and I think that was suggested by Tony. But we, but the rest of the stuff, we voted on that, but we didn't re-vote on what followed that. So I just want to make you clear of that, it was, uh, we were trying to get a quorum, just like you are doing today, and that was our reason from going from seven to five, and, but the other stuff was never a part of that discussion, as you guys may recall. Um, my main reason for coming down here and boring you folks this evening is, uh, my, one of my favorite subjects is the Blackhawk, which last year got me, uh, a termination notice from my hangar because I went in and, and politely, used my First Amendment rights to make a comment, so... At the time, as some of you may, John probably doesn't know, but there's a new pad, this is a year ago, the Blackhawk helicopter came out there and there's a, there's a plastic pad that was put out there. And just arbitrarily, it's right near my hangar, in front of my hangar. But, um, I complained about it because I can see is that helicopter, when they did their demonstration, they, they waltzed out there and they walked it over to the, to the taxiway, onto the runway, and no big, no big mishap, no blast of prop wash and stuff like that. Well, then they were taking off off the pad, so I started complaining about that. And there, actually you could see the tiles lifting and I was, told the city manager, told, uh, Tony, and hey, one of those fuselage is gonna come up, it's gonna, it's gonna send shrapnel across that, that, uh, the ramp there. Well, now it is, this year they decided that, yes, that pad is unsafe, so they want to put a new pad there, they want to pour a concrete pad. My recommendation, according to Tony, who's the smartest person in the room, there's only one place that helicopter can park, well, that's not the case. Last week it was parking down there by the gliders, which was kind of nice for everybody except the gliders. Um, what I recommend is, they have had an option for property across taxiway there for fifteen, twenty years, never paid a dime for it, let them put their pad out there. They don't want to do it because that would start their paying rent, which they've avoided and they've got a... Nobody gets an option for twen- a twenty-year option without paying for it, fire, Cal Fire does. So I'm saying they got that property out there, they got it tied up, let... So I'm saying they got that property out there, they got it tied up, let them put their pad out there, it's out of everybody's way. Last week, this is two aircraft were almost destroyed because of, because of prop wash. And I can, I can provide the names of the gentleman that happened to. Thank you.
Ruth Erickson.
I'd like to investigate this, follow up on, uh, what Mark was talking about, about the Blackhawk and the potential damage to other people's property and planes and the debris and whether or not they should, uh, relocate the helicopter pad for fire. I don't think we should just listen to him, look at him blankly and let him leave. I think we should actually follow up on this one and, and take a look at what's going on out there.
I agree.
If this is added to the agenda, do we need someone to come back and speak to us, um, who understands, you know, um, where there currently are, what the issues are? And I think they pay rent on the current, current pad. Um, and then, um, you know, just maybe someone from the airport can explain to us the situation with CalFire and what they need for that helipad. Um, what's a requirement and that sort of thing, so we can have more discussion.
Yeah, exactly. So at a future meeting, staff can come back with a presentation to explain the issues and then you can have a discussion.
I was gonna make it real simple. I was gonna go out there and meet with my favorite FBO operators, Dave, Hollister Jet Center. Um, no, uh, and actually look and watch them, watch them operate when they fly. That's the only time, that's the only way you're gonna see what's going on.
I think we have...
If they're taxiing, if they're taking off from the pad, what are they doing? And why was Mark so stirred up about it? Cause Mark isn't somebody that gets stirred up that easily. So something's going on out there and we just have to go out there and look for ourselves.
I think it has to be agendicized.
It does need to be agendized if you're going to make any sort of a decision on it. If, if you as a commission as a whole are going to discuss and make some sort of a decision or give staff direction, you'll have to do that in a public meeting. So you're welcome to go take a tour or, you know, see the facility on your own, but ultimately you'd want to do that in public.
Okay. That's fine. Just put it on the agenda then.
Do we want to go back to public input?
Well, Paul brought me the microphone. I said I could have gone up there. It was just that I wanted to ask if there's been any comment or question to the city about the airport sign being replaced. Nobody seems to know anything about it. I've talked to the city, I've talked to, um, what is it called? No, it used to be Caltrans, but now it belongs to the city or the county, I don't know. It's San Felipe. I spoke to two or three different people and I brought it up here two or three times over a period of time. We need to have the airport sign put back on the right-hand side of San Felipe, going north between Fallon and the airport. There was always a sign in the grassy area. And of course, it was a big sign, it was a big green sign that you see in any city. And it said airport with an arrow and there was a picture of a plane. And it was knocked down years ago and nobody ever replaced it. And if we're to be getting business out at the airport from Economic Development Council and so on, and the city and who else wants to come here, we need to have a sign. So why it's taking so long, I don't know, but I know there was a sign, I remember it from years ago. Do you remember the sign? Yes, he remembers the sign. Cause people kept saying, do you have a photograph? I said, who takes a photograph of a sign? But I remember it was knocked down and never replaced. So it's something the city needs to do, in my opinion.
I recommend that we put it on the agenda.
Do we know who takes care of these signs now? It's not Caltrans, it's Public Works or...
I would assume it's Public Works. Maybe Adam knows, um...
You, you don't know?
So we make them within city limits? No, we can't even, no, we can't do that. We can't just install a sign.
Yeah, we can just add it to a future agenda and, um, perhaps there's some history as to where it went, um, and maybe someone knows how to get a new one, if that's possible.
All right. Um, any other public input?
No, that was all.
Do we need to, um... There's no place here for next agenda items. Do, um... Items for next agenda, there is an item, a place on the agenda for that, um, but I assume we need to have that, items for next agenda. Um, I would think it would remain, um, items seven A and B. Um, and new items, um, the CalFire, uh, helipad discussion and the airport, uh, sign on San Felipe Road. Are there any other items to add to the next agenda?
There will be another discussion of the bylaws.
Oh, the bylaws, yes. Thank you.
When can we expect a copy of the Rosenberg rules?
Um, I can, well, um, it'll depend on how quickly I get your email addresses from Jennifer, but it, within the next day or two.
Okay.
Shouldn't take long. Yeah.
All right, uh, going on to item 11, next meeting date is the regular meeting, June 28th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Meeting adjourned.